Good evening, everybody. I hope you're all well. I'm glad we got some rain today. At least I did at my house. This is a public hearing for an application. At fifty-one Judge Bridge Road for a twelve-foot wide gate across an entrance to a farm road. And I believe there's also a fence included in that application. The public hearing was called by the Wetland Commission because we received more than twenty-five names requesting the public hearing. Within fourteen days of the meeting. Therefore, we have, we have to have a public hearing in accordance with state regulations. I'll call out order. I'll start with anybody on the commission. Just say your name.
Rob Horrigan.
John Smollega.
Sue Fitch.
Nobody else? Okay, we do have a quorum. I know Kathy told me she's not going to be able to attend because she's away.
Excuse me, Russ. I'm letting Sierra in right now.
Okay. Sierra's here. Sierra, you here?
How is everyone? Good job having elections and meeting the neighborhood school.
Sierra, you better mute yourself. Okay, um. We do have a new member, Melanie. I don't think Melanie's here, but she's a new member who won't be. Oh, Melanie, hi. Welcome to the commission. Thank you for, for joining.
Thank you.
Yep. We do have a full quorum and all the voting members are, are here. That would be, and I'm Russ D'Enzo. And I chair the commission. The voting members are myself, Rob Horrigan, John, Susan, Suzanne, and Sierra. Our alternates are, who are they? They're Kathy and Melanie. And there's one more. Unless we have an opening, we may. We've had a lot of changes in past few months. So I'll see the voting members for this public hearing. So we had a petition of over twenty-five names. I believe there's thirty-eight calling for the public hearing. That's the purpose of the public hearing. It was, the public hearing was noticed in voices on August tenth and August seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-two, as required by the regulations. The application is by Aaron Pelneck, sixty-five, Judge Bridge Road for a twelve-foot wide gate and fence. The purpose, yes.
I'm sorry to interrupt, but I, but the application that I saw, the word fence and is stricken, as is everything related to grading. It says gate. So I want to know if that changed again.
Um, I guess not. If it's not on the application, then the fence is not part of it.
Thank you.
It can't be, yeah. So this is just for a twelve-foot wide gate. Here's the rules, because last meeting was an embarrassment to the commission members, the volunteers of this commission, as well as to the town of Roxbury. We just don't conduct ourselves in the way that was conducted. A public hearing is to be done professionally. That means only one person speaks at a time. Nobody interrupts anybody except or especially commission members. Commission members, just so you know, because I know we have new people on this commission. The purpose of the public hearing is just what it says. It's to listen to the public about this application. I'm telling the public that this is the inland wetlands and water courses commission. We could only listen to and our jurisdiction is only in wetlands and water courses. Any other statement that has nothing to do with wetlands and water courses. And this application really is just wasting our time. The, the meeting will be held professionally and civilly as Roxbury residents have a history of doing. Again, nobody will, will talk over anybody. If you do, you will be warned. If you're warned and you still continue, you will be muted. If you unmute yourself, you will be thrown out of the meeting. Julie, do you have that red button that throws them out of the meeting and doesn't let them back in?
I do have the capability of when, if I have to remove them, not letting them back in.
Good. Keep your hand on that button. Because if you're disrespectful to this commission and you get in the way of the professional nature that we operate, you will be zoomed out of here. And make no mistake, I'm not going to have any patience tonight. So the purpose of the public hearing is for the public to comment. Commission members, you could ask questions of people who comment or, or representatives of either the applicant or people who requested the hearing. But I urge you to wait for the regular meeting where this is on the agenda to ask questions of the applicant or his representative. Really, the goal is to let the public comment on this application. With that, um, if you want to be heard, what I suggest is that you raise your hand. And, and you could do that on Zoom. There's a little hand thing. And if you don't know how to do that, just open up your video and wave and we'll get to you one at a time. So the application is very simple. It's a gate of a wood road on Judge Bridge Road. It's a twelve-foot wide gate. But the whole gate is within the upland review area and right on the banks of a brook, a very viable brook, although the brook today probably isn't running with much water. Because it has the potential to impact inland wetlands and the commission made that determination. It requires a permit from the commission. The sticky part on this one is it is a twelve-foot wide easement that allows the neighbor, Kevin Dumas, and his family access to a rare lot that I believe is nine acres, something like nine acres. It's a field right now. And Mr. Dumas and his wife mow that field and always have. And they have the right to pass without interruption that easement. That easement is the property of Mr. Pelneck and it is his property. But the easement does give the Dumas's the right to go back and forth in any way they shape or form at any time. They're not encumbered by any restrictions on that. The commission wanted, accepted the application, asked for a letter from an attorney of Mr. Pelneck's that stated that he had the right to make this application because my concern was we can't allow an application on somebody else's property, like if somebody wanted to put a shed on his neighbor's property. We, we don't have the right to issue that permit. I wanted to make sure that we, we could accept the application. And the letter, Julie, do we have that letter handy? You don't have to put it up, but could you give me the date and the name of the law firm that submitted that letter?
Yes, let me, uh, and um, it was dated June seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-two, right to pass and repass. Um, Slavin Sofiter and Scott LLC and by Dove Bronstein.
Okay, thank.
Gave the opinion.
So that's on the record and that, that letter is on the record. That opinion told us we did have the right and there was court cases that backed up the right of his client to put in a gate because it was not preventing access in and out. Okay, so then we received twenty-five names, more than twenty-five names who are residents of Roxbury or people who are registered to vote in the town of Roxbury requiring the public hearing. We did our public notices as required. Julie, can you tell me if Mr. Pelneck notified all adjoining neighbors by sending a copy of that notice to them?
I, I'm assuming he did. I do not know. That's one thing I don't have in my packet.
Okay.
I don't know if Karen, if Karen Eddy is on here, she may be able to confirm that.
Okay, well, if, if he didn't, then we'll, we'll have to ask him at the regular meeting if he did. And if he did, we're good to go. If he didn't, then we're going to have to call the application incomplete.
Russ, I did not get the notices.
Okay.
That the neighbors were notified. He may have done it, but I did not receive it.
Okay, we could ask that during the regular meeting. It's on the agenda, right?
Right. Yes, it is.
All right. So with that, um, does the applicant want to give a presentation or have somebody represent what they want to do and, and the purpose of the application? Aaron?
Uh, no, I'm okay with, with hearing what everybody has to say about the gate.
Is there, is there offense involved in your application as you think?
The application did not involve a fence.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that.
But when I asked the contractor to provide a letter which explains how everything is going to be conducted while building, I asked him about a fence as well. And so he included in his letter to the town an explanation which mentioned the fence.
Right, but if, if it's not on the application, then it's going to need its own permit. And we, we only could act on what's on the application.
Is the fence in regulated area as well?
Yes, it is. Yes, it is. And it does require a permit because there's going to be digging involved, even if it's by hand. Requires a permit. Okay, with that, uh, who wants to start from the public? I would assume the Dumas's. Would you like to begin and have your representative speak?
Good evening, Russ. It's Kevin. I would like Greg Carver to speak, uh, to start out, please.
Okay. Um, we, we did receive a letter from Mr. Kava. Um, I hope, well, two things I want to ask. Is there anybody on the commission who did not go out and look at this as I requested? Nobody? Good. Number two, did everybody get a chance to read Mr. Kava's letter today?
Yes.
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 Yeah, I did too. Okay. Julie, would you state for the record the date of that letter from Mr. Kava?
Uh, Mr. Kava submitted a letter, August seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-two.
Okay, thank you. That letter is now on the record. Mr. Kava, okay, you're up.
All right. First thing I'd like to ask is, uh, would it be possible to extend to me the screen sharing privileges? So I have a few things that I would like to be able to share to make the, to make this go faster.
Yes, you may share.
Okay. The only question is, where is that?
It takes a minute, Greg.
Oh, okay.
It does.
All right, that's fine. Uh, all right. Well, let me, for the record, my name is Gregory Kava. I'm an attorney at law here in Roxbury, Connecticut with Kava Law Firm LLC. And I am here tonight representing Kevin and Diane Dumas. Uh, the Dumas's, as you know, own sixty-three Judge Bridge Road where they live. Um, and they also own another lot that you referred to, Mr. Chairman, and that is Assessor's Map ten Lot Twenty, and that was also shown on a map attached to my letter, which I would share, except for the fact that I don't have sharing yet. Um, and, um.
Did you hit sharing? Did you hit share?
I don't see it on here.
Should be up top.
I'm not sharing anything and it's saying you should be able to share.
Yeah, he's got to hit his share button.
I have, there's no share button. That's the problem here.
If, if you, if you touch and go down on the bottom of the screen, you'll see a green thing that says share screen.
Oh, there it is. It, it just turned green. Thank you. It's, it's here. I do have it.
Go ahead, hit that.
Okay, yeah, we, um. We have that and, um. Just give me one second. I, I've misplaced what I wanted to share. Hold on.
Yep.
All right, here it is. Okay, uh. Having a little technical issue here. Give me one second. Um. Let me try one more time. Okay. Now I'll share the screen. Uh. Okay. Can you see this map?
Not yet.
Uh, boy.
It is.
Let me try again.
There you go.
Okay.
There it is. Yep, you're all set.
All right, so, uh, the Dumas's live at, if you can see my cursor, I hope you can see my cursor.
We can.
This is the, this is sixty-three right here. This is the lot the Dumas's own, uh, that they live on. It goes all the way up to the stream and in the stream is the boundary. Uh, and then they own this parcel over here, uh, which is the piece you referred to, Russ, that they have been mowing. And that parcel is actually all just under five acres.
Okay.
And, uh, and the, the house lot is, uh, is over five acres, five and a half acres. So those are the two lots they own and they own a right of way. And that right of way crosses, uh, the property of the Palatniks. Um, and it, it comes next to the screen, to the stream. It crosses it and it gives, it provides access to this back, this back parcel right here. All right, so, um. There are, I, in my, in my letter, I discussed with you four principal reasons you need to deny this application. Uh, I'm, I'm going to say what the four are and then I'm going to take you through them. Most of them are short. Uh, one of them is longer. The, um. This gate is not located within the, I'm, I'm pretty sure this gate is not located within the Palatniks property. It's actually located in, in, in the road. It's in the town road. Now, um, I will tell you how I came to that conclusion in a minute. The, the right gate post on this gate, the one that's furthest to the right, is actually on the downslope of the stream channel. It's virtually in the stream. Um, and even if the, at least that's where the, that's where the stick is, that's out in the field, the flagged marker. Even if this gate were on the property of the applicant, it would not be permitted under Connecticut law. Uh, because, um, it unreasonably interrupts with Dumas's passage rights, Dumas's passage rights. And, uh, and, and I do not agree with the letter that their counsel presented. Um, and then finally, this application does not meet the test for approval of a regulated activity when a public is hearing, hearing is held. And I'll go through that when I get there. Let me start, um, actually, uh, with, um, with this, uh, screen share here. This, this comes from my letter. And if you can see, this is, this is from a map, um, uh, that I included as, as part of this application. This is an excerpt from it. And it shows you that, uh, on this map, there's a considerable amount of distance between the property boundary and the paved portion, not paved, but the gravel portion of the road. Um, and in fact, uh, when, when I measured this in the field, it appeared to be about fifteen feet to this point and twenty-two feet, uh, to this point over here. However, I, I looked at some other maps and I see the road in a slightly different location. It's a little bit closer to this end of the bridge. So I went out and looked again. And this time, instead of, um, in, instead of trying to go where the paved road is, just in case over time it's been added to or moved or what have you. Uh, I wanted to see how close it was from the bridge abutment to the property line. Uh, for, you know, from the edge of the bridge to the property line because, uh, uh, you know, that, that, that's, that's, that would be something that didn't move. The bridge hasn't moved. On all these maps, it's in the same place. Now, in order to do this, I scaled off of the map, uh, that this, um, uh, it, it, that, that is involved here. And I'm going to move that onto my, um. I mean, I did the best thing you could do when you're not a surveyor. Um, and, uh, let me see if, um. Are, are you looking at a large, at this map larger where you can see other pieces of it?
Yes.
So what I did is I went up here and I, I increased the size of the screen until I had a, a measurable thing on an engineer scale that corresponded to this thirty-foot setback line here. And that allowed me to know what the scale was. I, I then scaled these and that's how I came out with those distances. But I then scaled this here to see what this was. Uh, and I compared it to the other maps. And in fact, uh, the property line is some eight to nine feet from this bridge, from the back of this bridge. Uh, and the, the stakes. If you look at where the stakes are for this, they're about five feet back. So there's at least, they're at least three feet into the road. Uh, there's no doubt about that based on going out there. If you were to measure it, I think you'd probably reach, you'd probably reach the same conclusion that I did. And, uh, and so I do believe that that is, that that gate is proposed to be located on the right of way for Judge Bridge Road and not on the, not at the edge of the right of way or the edge of the property where it goes. So it, it may not be twenty odd, twenty-two and fifteen feet, but maybe, it may be closer to, to, to being three, four, five, eight feet, eight feet or so away from the road. But the problem is, how are you going to open that gate? You're going to open that gate into the road. And therein lies your problem. You're not going to be able to open it in to the property. And the reason is, is right here, there's a big piece of ledge that sticks out.
We lost your map, Greg.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Your happy face.
You know, you know what? I thank you for, for reminding me that. Let me, let me try that again. Um, okay, so, uh, it, it, it could very well be that, that this is, is not fifteen feet here and twenty-two. It may be closer to, to three to five and maybe eight, nine. Uh, where, where, where that property line is from the paved portion of the road, because the road seems to be a little bit further this way. But the problem is you can't open in because right here, there's a big piece of ledge that sticks out and there's a bank. And if you open the gate into that, it's going to stop the gate and it's going to restrict the passage to well under the twelve feet that they're entitled to. So you're not going to open in. You're going to have to open out, which means you got to open into the road. Well, you can open into the road. And so this is a Hobson's choice and it's the reason why this is not the place for a gate and the gate shouldn't be allowed there. Because it restricts the passage rights of the Dumas's. But in any event, the gate's not even in on the property, the applicant. It's in the road. Uh, okay, the, the right gate post, I saw where it's going to be located and it is in the downslope of the brook. What's happened is the brook has moved. The brook is moving to the south. And, uh, Mr. Dumas will tell you that there was, there have been a couple of pretty big storms recently that have caused the edge of this brook is now right up, I mean, the, the, the brook water is right over here. And the edge of the, of the slope, what's been carved out of the land by the, by the flowage of water, when it's high water, has basically completely gone around this knee wall here and it's basically back in here. Uh, it, it goes over to here. And so that post is supposedly being set in the, in the slope. And I don't think you want a post for a, for a gate located in the slope of a stream because that's just going to get undermined. Uh, and it's going to cause all kinds of, of, of material to flow into the stream that doesn't belong there, including probably the gate. We'll talk about that a little bit later. Okay, now I want to get to the letter that counsel wrote. Counsel took this position that, well, um, uh, this, um. Counsel took the position that as long as you give access, reasonable access to the person with the right of way, you can put up a gate. Well, there might be a case that says that and probably, there probably are some cases that say that. The problem with it is it's, it's a little bit short, but the law is. And the reason for that is, is our Supreme Court says you've got to look to the easement itself because the character and extent of the easement.
Um, Greg, one minute. There's somebody, could everybody go on? Because we're losing, we're getting doggies.
Yeah.
Oh, that's you, Suzanne?
Okay.
Yep, go ahead.
So in anywhere, in any event, it's not enough just to find a case that stands for a proposition. You have to look what the Supreme Court says is the test. And the test is you got to look at the language of the grant. Because that's what determines the character and extent of the easement. And counsel did not, counsel for the applicant did not do that. All they did was they said that case law says, they didn't cite one case, they didn't explain a case, they never looked at the language of the easement or any analysis of it. So what I've done is I've actually analyzed it and done what our Supreme Court or what a trial court would do in terms of facing this issue. So that's the deal. You've got to look at the original grant and if that language is ambiguous, then any doubt is construed in favor of the party who benefits from the easement and against the party whose property is burdened by the easement. That's the rule that our Supreme Court uses. And so, um, we have to go look at the original, um, the original grant. And I'm going to put that on the screen so you can see it. And this is in a, this is in an, an old deed about sixty-three years ago. Um, with any luck, I'll be able to, uh, get that up in a second. Here it is. Um. Where'd it go? It's not showing it, um. Here, let me, let me, let me try screen here again.
Yeah. Sometimes it goes out.
All right, we got it. Okay, so here's the deed. It's a deed from Ida Gillette to James, James Irons. And this deed, I've highlighted the part. The grantor reserves for herself her heirs and assigns and others to whom the same rights may be granted the right to pass and repass at all times and for all purposes over a twelve-foot strip of land leading from the highway to her other property. Okay? And it's, it's the property shown on the map. And this is the map that she recorded in, in connection with this. Uh, she recorded this map here. And I'm going to try to make it just a little bigger. And, and what you're going to see is, um. This is, the Dumas property is over here on the, to the right. That's their house lot. And then this property back here is the lot that they mow that we talked about. And this piece is where the Palatniks live. And then this over here is Judith Kelly's property. And so Mrs. Gillette owned the Gillette's on, and also there's a Benjamin Gillette. The Gillette's owned a lot of property here. And when she conveyed this away, she reserved this right of way shown on this map. Uh, and that, and that's what she kept. And so, um. If you look at that grant, you've got to look at that language and that language is at all times and for all purposes. That defines what her easement is. And so, um, uh, it's, it's very important to, to, to look at that because that's what our court says. And that easement has passed down into the Dumas deeds and also in the Palatnik deed, it says that it's subject to that right to pass and repass, et cetera, et cetera. It lined out the whole thing in the deed it referred to. So for, at all times and for all purposes is a burden on the Palatnik property. And so it's clear that Dumas has a right to pass and repass. He's got twelve feet. And the applicant proposes to put a gate that restricts this right to less than twelve feet. That's not allowed under Connecticut law. Um, and, uh, and so the other problem with this gate is it's not just a lawnmower that will have trouble, may have trouble getting through. But you've got to allow larger vehicles. What if they need to cut down a tree and have to bring in the truck of, of an arborist? What if there is an emergency? If, uh, for example, Mr. Dumas is on his mower and he, and it turns over on him and he needs an emergency vehicle? What if there's a brush fryer and we need a fire truck to get back there? So you can't take a twelve-foot easement and shrink it down to less or have a gate that, that impedes passage. You know, one of the other problems is how do you, it's, it's difficult enough for a vehicle to turn into that, that, that right of way. Especially if they're coming from, uh, especially if they're coming from the, um, uh, from the north. You know, if they're coming from, uh, you know, the Century Hill Road, which is where Dumas's property is on the corner of Century Hill. And it's, and that's paved all the way to, to, to Judge Bridge. And so if a fire truck or other large vehicles coming in, chances are good to come that way. Hard enough for them to turn into that right of way from that direction because it kind of, it kind of tilts toward the south when it hits the road. But it, it, it would be, it would be impossible with a gate there. So this gate is clearly interfering. Now, um, I happen to look around at some cases and I cited a bunch of cases for you. And one of them that I think is very critical is Henning versus Romeo, which is a case from New Milford. There was a fight over putting a gate across a right of way. Um, and, uh, and the Hennings wanted an injunction to stop Romeo from blocking. to stop Romeo from blocking or impeding their right of way by closing a gate, verbally accosting them and communicating the third parties that they have no right to use the easement to obtain access to their property. And for that reason, the the Palatnik uh uh sign, no trespassing sign, which really faces the parties coming down the right of way is not legal. Because there is the right to pass on that right of way. You cannot say no trespassing on a right of way. He might be able to say no trespassing on his property, but not on the right of way. So he's doing the same thing Romeo did. He's blocking or impeding our right across this right of way. And he wants to put a gate there to further block our right to get across this right of way. Um, and so and this is something that's that's happened uh actually um in in the past. And I I think that um uh I I there were a couple of pictures I wanted to show you where this is this has actually been um uh been been going on. And let me just share the screen and uh. Mr. Dumas will tell you that this car belongs to Mr. Palatnik. It is parked directly in the right of way. And he will tell you that this and Kevin, correct me if I'm wrong, this car was parked there while you and Diana were actually on the property and you could not get out. It blocked you from exiting the property. Am I am I correct on that?
That is correct.
All right, uh, there's there's another um. There's there's another one I want to show you of 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 the car in the right of way. Uh, so you can you can see. I'm getting better at this screen sharing.
There you go.
You can you can see that that is the car with its back to the road parked directly in the right of way, blocking passage. You cannot get around that. And here's that. And to the right here, this is that hill I told you about. There's ledge coming out here and any gate. The gate might be placed over here, but when it opens, it's going to open canted this way and further restrict the passage, the passage rights. And so that that this picture illustrates that as well. And then uh finally, uh, this is another picture of the right of way being blocked. And I think it shows you the side of the car. You should be able to see the side of the car. Um, that is blocking in the right of way. So here you have just about um, just about the same situation uh that you had in in the Romeo case and Henning versus Romeo. And believe me, Romeo was no Romeo. I can tell you that. Um, and so it was a really difficult situation. What the court found is that is that Henning had a ten-foot wide right of way, a gate with gate posts at the boundary line between their properties. So that one gate post is in the right of way or or if the gates close, it interferes with their passage is not legal. Uh, the presence of the gate post, even if the gate is open, has narrowed their use of the right of way to fewer than ten feet. And the court issued an injunction to stop it. Um, they also found that there were verbal attempts to use signs and to verbally tell people to discourage repair people, delivery people and other people from using it and the closing of the gate interferes. And so um, the other thing they found was that Romeo placed rocks in front of the gate to to in front of the gate to block the right of way. Just as it just as the Palatniks have placed a car in the right of way to block it, the Romeo put rocks. And so uh when the gates closed, the court said it doesn't benefit the defendants at all. The only effect is to obstruct plaintiff's right of way. And so what the court did is it issued an injunction. It it's it permanently enjoined uh Romeo from blocking or impeding their right of ingress, including but not limited to closing the gate, verbally accosting the plaintiffs, communicating to third parties that they have no right of passage over the easement, and they made them move the gate post. Uh, and and so that's what a court did on that. And this
May I may I say something?
Aaron, Aaron, no.
No.
No, if you if you interrupt and I've already warned, I will mute you. Do not interrupt and please mute yourself. A public hearing is allowed a public to express what they feel without being interrupted. Please do not do that again. I beg of you.
All right, well, um, i- i- in addition, the applicant has not has failed to cite even a single case of trespassing or any other criminal event in that area. Uh, the Dumas's are not aware of anything that's occurred in their area. This is a very low-traffic road, a very rural, low-traffic dirt road, which uh doesn't get enormous amount of traffic. Um, and um if anyone is is likely, if anybody is likely to want to to want to go to the to the Palatnik House, they surely aren't going to come down here and then climb the hill to get up to the Palatnik House. What they're going to do is they're going to go down the Palatnik's ungated driveway to get to their house. So if there's any issue or concern for for them, it's probably their own driveway, not this right of way. Uh, and so that so this is an issue. Now, there's another case I wanted I cited Mineral Springs versus McCarthy, another Connecticut case. And in that case, it's very analogous to our situation because that case, even an unlocked gate was found to violate an easement that specified it was not to be encumbered, not to be blocked. Uh, our situation is is exactly the same. We have the right to pass for all purposes at all times. If you gate that easement, that means that when Dumas comes up to to bring this lawnmower or his car or truck or 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 any other vehicle, they're going to have to stop. They're going to have to stop with their vehicle parked in Judge Bridge Road. That's a safety hazard, a traffic hazard. They're going to have to dismount, open the gate, remount to put their vehicle through, dismount again to close the gate and remount to continue on their way. So there is a period of time in which Dumas cannot pass through. So it isn't at all times. Hence, it violates the case. All times implies the right is not to be interrupted. Gates and fences are there to interrupt passage. That's the only reason they're there. And and so it does not is not consistent with providing the Dumas's with passage at all times. And uh I pointed out that interruption, the ordinary definition is a stoppage or hindering of an activity, a break in the continuity. That's exactly what a gate is.
Okay.
You've got to
Greg, I have a
fast stop close. That's not at all times.
Greg, I have a couple of questions.
Yeah, go ahead.
Which is important. Is this a legal building lot? In other words, could a house be someday built in that field?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, so that 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 would be a problem, I would think. But that's not our issue right now. The second thing is you've talked about the gate in legal cases. How does that relate to wetlands?
Well, I I I I primarily brought this up because at the beginning of the of the process, Russ, I I read the minutes and I I looked at the the hearings on, you know, your your taped versions of them. And what I saw was that you were asking a question. Does he and you asked it tonight. Does he even have a right to put a gate there? And the answer to the question, what I'm trying to say is no. Uh, I'm also going to tie it into the wetlands issues as well, but right. But I I wanted to start with answering your earlier question because he put in a letter from a lawyer and the problem with the letter from the lawyer is it doesn't tell the whole story. And that and 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 he does not have a right to put up a gate in in on this right of way. And that's I wanted to make that clear that this is
So so if I read it correctly, if he doesn't have a right to put up a gate, then the and I'm again, I'm trying to connect this to wetlands and what the commission's authority is. If he doesn't have a right to put up a gate, then the Wetland Commission does not have the authority to issue a permit, which he needs to put up the gate.
That's correct. Um, that that that's
So so really, he for the Wetland Commission is in a conundrum because somebody's applied to put up a gate. It's their property. They own the property. But because of a civil matter and easement, uh, it's, as I've said, kind of like putting a shed on somebody else's property and and claiming you have a right to do that.
May I um add something?
Yeah.
Um, so I'm on the library commission and the thing that concerns me in this case is, you know, how it's written in the will.
Yep.
You know, and that's not our authority. So it's confusing about how we would proceed and allow them to do something when it's really a legal matter.
Well, it's it's more than a legal matter because
Yeah, no, I see. I see how it's also like I I've read all the documents. Um. But, you know, we can decide if it is or is not on wetlands, but at the same time, it's a lead, you know, a lot of it is legal. It's are they allowed to do this when it's a shared driveway and they might be, you know, infringing on someone else's rights to be able to get through the driveway?
Right. I mean, what 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 the fact is is that because the easement has to be open at all times, they can't block it. They can't fence it. They can't gate it. They can't do anything. And they're asking you for a permit to do something that legally they're not entitled to do. It would be as if someone came in and asked you for a wetlands permit to construct a hundred-story building right next to a wetland. Uh, because Roxbury doesn't permit hundred-story buildings and therefore they have no right to do it. So they'd be asking you for a permit and you'd be you'd be evaluating a permit to do something that's illegal. And I don't think that I think that that would taint your your approval with illegality. And Russ was very right and very prescient to ask the question, does he even have a right to do this? And the answer is no. Um, so um, I I want to get to the wetland stuff, but I'm I'm happy to
No, no, we we could, we could, we want to gather information. I thought my questions were pertinent to uh help the commission understand where where our authority is here and help them understand because you're going through a lot of legal stuff. And I I'm thinking in my mind, if I didn't have the experience of going through this, um, you know, what what's what's wetland about this is and okay, so we got that.
Okay, I I I just
Rob, yeah, Rob, sure.
Yeah, I'm sorry, Rob.
Um, just if if we needed to get um a legal opinion from Gail McTaggart, would the applicant need to pick up the bill for that?
Uh, no.
Why is
Well, we we have it in our regs where they have to pick up the bill for consultants.
But would wouldn't it be considered a legal consultant?
Maybe, maybe. I I Gail would have to tell us that.
Okay.
But it's rare. I would think that um applicants have to pay for our legal advice. And although I agree, we're we're going to need to get them involved.
All right, well, um. I I just wanted to make two more comments about the easement and then I want to move on to wetlands.
Okay, great. Because we we like hearing about wetlands.
No, no, I know you do. I know you do. And I'm sorry we got we got down this road, but I had to tell you because I don't think you can grant a permit for some
Understood, understood, and it's important.
Okay, so I cited a couple other cases. There's the Betterd case that says that uh when you when the then the gate isn't reasonably necessary to provide a right of passage. It creates an obstruction and inhibits landowner's free passage over his property. Um, also, there's another case, the the Willian's and Trammell case where there's an it was an easement granted. It didn't reflect the presence of gates or obstructions. And so they got to be removed. You can't you can't put them there. There was nothing in the easement that created this that provided for a gate, allowed for a gate, discussed a gate or granted the right for anyone to gate it. Uh, and in fact, it 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 what it did reserve was free passage at all times. And so that's why I want to make that clear now. Um, I'll I'll move on. I'll I'll move on to wetlands. Um, the 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 it's what's very clear and we know we've said this a million times is that whenever you have a public hearing, an application with a received a public hearing, uh, you cannot grant the permit. You must deny the permit unless you find on the basis of the record that a feasible and prudent alternative does not exist. So unless we find there's no feasible and prudent alternative, you can't grant the permit. Um, now, the applicant has not demonstrated a need for a gate. Uh, so the applicant could continue the situation. No gate, the same thing that's existed for sixty-three years. If the applicant was legitimately worried about trespassers and not just worried about blocking Dumas, then the applicant could erect fencing around their house outside the hundred-foot regulated area. Uh, that's a feasible and prudent alternative that would that would deal with the issue of security. Uh, but what he can't do is block the gate. And so um what we do is because there are feasible and prudent alternatives, we take into consideration the factors under twenty-two A forty-one, one through six, which is in your regulations. Um, and uh th- this gate is proposed to be placed virtually in or right next to a stream channel of a dynamic water course. And it's important to understand this water course is moving. It is moving south. It is moving toward the Palatniks. Uh, be- because of because of natural functions. And so you've got a moving water course and he's proposing to put a gate post in the bank of the water course. That's where that one post is on the right side. The the this is this isn't even a hard case on whether or not that's that's the kind of impact you can't allow. I mean, because there are feasible and prudent alternatives. Um, okay, so the of the six factors, the first thing we look at is environmental impact on wetlands and water cases. Putting the post on the downslope, it's almost certain to be undermined. When it's undermined, it's gonna not just release dirt, fines uh and other stuff. Uh, but it's gonna it's gonna knock the gate out of alignment. Now the gate's not going to open. It's going to be an immovable obstruction. And then the next thing it's going to do, it's going to collapse into the stream, possibly blocking the the channel or polluting the resource. Just it's just simply too close to the water course to avoid negatively impacting it. And I think that's a factor you should take into consideration. The applicant's purpose and any feasible and prudent alternatives that would cause less or no environmental Well, I stated before, he can put a fence in outside the hundred-foot area. He can he cannot put a put a gate at all and still continue to use it the way it's been done for sixty-three years. So there are feasible and prudent alternatives that would cause less environmental impact. Um, and uh, the applicant has not demonstrated a need for this fence. And and there's something I want to show you actually. Um, that 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 uh gets to the issue of 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 trespassers or or concerns about safety. Uh, Mr. Dumas will tell you that he is not aware of anyone causing criminal activity, mischief or trespassing on the property, on his on his property in the back or on this right, using this right of way to access their property or on his own property. Um, there actually though, that's not true because he pointed out to me there is one person that has trespassed on his property. Can you see this?
Not yet.
Oh, why did it not join? Hold on.
There it is. Takes time sometimes.
All right, this is the Dumas's lot in the back that they mow. We talked about the lot, not their house lot, but the lot. Their house lot is on this the near side of the stream and the stream is the boundary. Okay? This is the only trespasser he will tell you that he has seen. You recognize that car?
Yes.
All right, that is the only trespasser, the applicant, trespassed on this property. Now, Kevin, can you tell us, do you know what was in that cart that he was carrying? Did he have permission to be on your property?
No.
Uh, and he and he has no easement right to cross your property.
Correct.
All right. And do you know what he was carrying in that cart that he was dragging across your property, that U-Haul cart?
Brush dropped on the opposite side of my property.
And did he did he dump that brush on your property?
Yes.
All right. So the only person that really conceivably needs protection, if anybody, is the Dumas's, not the applicant. And I I think that this is uh this is just another another event in case uh where um I'm trying to get rid of this thing, but in any event, this is just another case uh where um where there's been no purpose evinced for what what for the need for a gate. Okay, and um so the feasible and prudent alternatives we've described. Now, there's the next item, number three, is the relationship between short-term and long-term impacts. Well, there are short-term impacts. In order to put up that gate post, the worker's going to have to be in the stream. But the but the negative impacts of the possibility of it collapsing into the stream, of being undermined, of being a problem, uh, all of these are um are going to be long-term and they're going to exist as long as that gate's in place. So then we look at the irreversible and number four irreversible and irretrievable loss of wetland resources, et cetera, and mitigation measures, uh, which may include measures to prevent and minimize pollution or other environmental damage. As long as that gate's there, you can't prevent that. You're going to have the chance of that damage occurring. And because that stream is moving, it's virtually certain that gate's going to be in the stream in a short period of time. So this is not the place to put a gate uh under these circumstances, even if he could legally do it. And I've told you he can't legally do it. Even if he could legally put it there from a wetlands perspective, this is the wrong place. Um, number five, uh, the character and degree of injury to or interference with safety, health or reasonable use of property, which is caused or threatened by this regulated activity. As I've said, whether open or closed, whether it's undermined and stuck closed or whatever, this regulated activity, the installation that grade is going to do, that gate is going to do great injury to Dumas's rights to use their right of way. It's going to eliminate their 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 absolute legal right to be have constant access uh at any time, for any purpose. It creates safety concerns if they have to dismount a lawnmower and get out of their car or their lawnmower to open that gate. It's going to interfere with their reasonable property rights. And for that reason, it doesn't pass muster under item five of the of the of the list. Item six, the last item is impacts outside the area of the regulated activity. And as I've said, the regulated activity is is where he's putting the gate. But this is a poorly conceived plan and it's got a good chance of being undermined, dropping into the water course, bringing sand, silt and fines into the water. But this is a poorly conceived plan, and it's got a good chance of being undermined, dropping into the water course, bringing sand, silt, and fines into the water with it. Blocking the stream, unnaturally altering its course possibly or function, and all without a real reason other than to harass and interfere. With with the Dumas's use of their right of way. So for those reasons, it doesn't pass muster under your wetland regulations or under the wetlands laws. And there are feasible and prudent alternatives. So doing the analysis and with the feasible and prudent alternatives out there, you must deny this permit. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them, and I am so sorry that took that long. There's a lot wrong with this thing.
Okay, who's next? Anybody else from the public want to speak? You could, you could hit hit the little hand on the bottom. Or you could just uh show your show your person and and wave to us. And we'll and Julie will let you in.
May I speak?
Um, yeah, but why don't we let let's let the public speak first, so when you speak, you've you've had all the. Um, okay. Information. Anybody else from the public?
Russ, it's Kevin. I'd like to speak very briefly.
Go ahead, Kevin.
It's Kevin Dumas, sixty-three Judge Bridge Road. I would just like to uh in reference to the wetlands. I would just like to remind the wetlands commission, because I know they've all been there. Of the of what has been going down, uh what has been happening in that river. As late as last August, that river was blocked. By the mic by the seven-inch storm that we had last uh last August, you remember that? And the back of my lot in question was flooded and created a brand-new stream. So I want to remind them that that river is changing dramatically. Three years ago, I want to remind the wetlands commission, because I know you have new members, that we had a microburst come through there. You would have seen that on your tour, why on the trees ripped right out of the ground on the applicant's property. Blocking my right of way for two weeks. Because we couldn't get tree companies in there, and my wife and I were out in the road of Judge Bridge. Getting people home safely because they couldn't get home. And that occurred roughly three years ago. Incredible microburst, something I haven't seen in my thirty-plus years on the property. Um, I I also want to remind you, i- if anyone's ever ever been on Judge Bridge in the winter. Uh, that that stream in that area is a skating rink, and you can't even go up that way. When we leave our property, we have to go left on Century Hill. Again, I'm just trying to uh educate your committee. I know that that's what this public forum is for. In that that river has had numerous incidents in the last five years. That I want them to be aware of, and especially the microburst was unbelievable. And so those are the only things I need to add to Greg's comments.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. Anybody else? Nobody? We're all good? Don't want to leave anybody out. Want to make sure everybody has their say. Okay, Aaron, the applicant. Go ahead, Aaron. Aaron, you there? You're on mute. I know you know how to unmute yourself, so are you there? Maybe he dropped out?
It's still listening.
Okay, I'm 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 you, I'm using myself.
Okay.
Well, so thanks for uh taking the time to join the meeting. And what I want to say is that uh there are two sides to every story. Uh, when we bought this property uh just under uh just about three years ago. Uh, we found a property that was neglected for many, many years by previous owners. There was lots of brush, there were gaping holes full of trash in just in that area. Uh, trees that that were on the ground. And and we had to start clearing the space, and in the process. We discovered all sorts of things buried in the ground that could contaminate the the brook. The reason we purchased this property is because we love the wetlands and we have no issue with the wetlands. We don't want to interrupt or interfere, and so. We hired a surveyor. A surveyor who I'm sure you're all familiar with, who came on these meetings many, many times. His name is Michael Alex, and he and I asked him, can we uh uh secure that area? And will you please mark the the a gate in case we wanted to build a gate? The reason we wanted to build this gate is because occasionally, it doesn't happen a lot, but it happened enough times to justify. Some sort of a deterrent against people who walk off the main road. And go down there and sit on our picnic tables and relax on our property. Um, there's uh a couple of instances where I walked down to the brook from our house. And there are people sitting there, having having relaxed time with with children. Now, one of the toddlers was running around pulling out the surveyor stakes out of the ground. And we had to call the surveyor to come and do it again. So I thought I'll put a sign saying no trespassing, thought maybe that will help. But it's completely been ignored. The next thing I did is I called um uh several lawyers in New Milford and my lawyer. Who researched the title. And his opinion is not just his opinion, it's the opinion of several legal advisors. Um, from the region. Who explained that on a private right-of-way. One has a right to build a gate as long as it does not. Uh, prevent the neighbor who owns the right-of-way to to go through the the road. Okay, now the road, of course, has been eroded for so many years, and no one took care of it. No one took care of it. In fact. Dumas used to take care of it, and after we moved to the uh to the uh property, on the day we moved, in fact. He sent me a text. Um, and said that he was cutting some tree on our property. When we arrived, on the same, the day we moved into the 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 neighborhood, into our house. I noticed the tree on the side of the brook where the gate's supposed to be now. Cut down and removed without permits of any sort. For the next year, year and a half, he kept on cutting grass on our property. Blowing leaves on weekends in the morning, okay, creating a lot of clouds of dust, all of which flying into the into the.
Aaron, Aaron, what does this have to do?
It has to do, it has to do with the right, my right to. To have safety on my property in an area that I cannot see directly from my own.
Okay.
And just because Dumas never saw people sitting there, it doesn't mean that I'm not there. And that I don't have legally a right to place a gate, as long as it doesn't interfere. Let's put it this way, let's say you gave me a permit and I built a gate. And the gate interfered with his ability to come in and out on 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 onto his field. We can always take it down and move it and change it. But the idea that a surveyor planted those with enough. With enough safety and a warning saying. This cannot be on this side of the stake, but on the outer side, so that you always stay away from the town's right-of-way. And from the neighbors' right-of-way. And this is exactly what he did, okay? Regarding harming the the brook. I don't see how, from my point of view, okay, if you plant a post, what's a gate? A gate is a post. With a couple of hinges and a door, and it opens and closes, okay? Hundreds of them are all over the town of Roxbury. And I'm not inventing a design, and I'm not inventing, I've seen them also next to brooks. Now, moving on to my bad behavior, okay? Um, the picture of the car that he shows, my car on the right-of-way, happened. A year and a half or two years ago, okay? And it happened once, and it happened on a weekend. When he happened to cut the grass and and my wife told me that we needed to rush to her family, and we jumped in another car, and I left it there. And as soon as I returned, I moved it, and he was able to to get his equipment out of there. That happened once, okay? Now, two weeks ago, Dumas is still cutting grass on my property, and I'm asking him to please stop interfering in our little piece of land. It's as if he's trying to annex that piece of land. On the day I was supposed to sign on the daughter line, he sent a messenger. In the form of of an agent to see if I'll sell him that little piece of land. Moving forward to the last point, okay, building on the law, okay? Both my legal advisors and myself researched in state regulations and town regulations, which are some subsequent to the state. And in order to build an interior lot, you must have an accessway. An accessway which is fifty foot wide throughout its length. This is not.
Aaron, you're getting off, you're getting off course of what the Wetland Commission needs.
But I do have, I do have a right to retort and answer to the council. And and then let me just make the last piece of statement.
Yeah, because I'm gonna be closing this public hearing, because we gotta get into our regular meeting. I would appreciate it if we could stick to wetland issues. You've explained why you want to do this. As far as whether it's a legal building or not, that or not, we don't care. We don't care. It's not what's what we're here for right now.
It is, it is, in my opinion, okay? And in your opinion, you visited site, and in the last meeting, you you uh. Said that you don't see a problem with the gate. So counsel for Kevin uh expressing all of this. And 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 showing how bad I am is is really irrelevant here. Do I have a right and do I not? Do I have a right to build on my property as long as I'm not touching the the town's property? And do I have a right to build a gate if it doesn't interfere with his uh movement in and out of the field, okay?
That's a good, that's a good legal question which we will be.
Yeah, and one, one, one last. You know, the trespassing that he told on me, uh, the the debris on that truck. Went on the land where he piled up a lot of the uh 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 gardening debris. Which was on the neighbors', not his own property, on a neighbor's property, which is adjacent. To my property, I have two acres at the back, to which I have no access. In my opinion, all of this, all of this, this entire field. And my property and Julian Beffler's property from uh from next door. Is just a buffer, it's a buffer for uh to prevent overdevelopment. How does this connect with the gate, okay? The gate is never gonna be in the way of a building, because there isn't going to be a building. Uh, the gate is not interfering with the uh 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 brook, because it's it's it was going to be built according to standards. Suggested by the builder, who's built hundreds of them and several of them on the road, Judge Bridge Road, which I inspected. Never using any heavy equipment, never stepping into the water, never, never using uh chemicals. Only using what's available on the on the lot and installing a post, a couple of hinges and a door. I'm done.
Okay, all right, thank you, Aaron. Appreciate it, yep. Anybody else? Uh, commission.
It looks like Barbara's raising her hand, Russ.
Pardon, Christina?
Yes. Barbara's raising her hand, sorry.
Oh, there you are. Okay, there you are. Hello, go ahead, Barbara.
Okay, I'm sorry, it took me a while to find this on the iPad, otherwise I would have spoke before, but. Um, I'm just sitting here, just kind of scratching my head a little bit.
Say your name and where you live for the record.
Sure, Barbara Henry, seventy-four Mallory Road in Roxbury. Um. I I'm just like, why, I'm just trying to figure out why is this even before wetlands, when. Um, Greg was speaking, he said that um legally. That that the Dumas's have the right to pass and repass without any obstruction, et cetera. So if that is the case, that's just, that ends the the reason or the fact why. Um, a gate can or cannot be built there. So why is it in wetlands?
Yeah, I could answer that, because the applicant with their application. Submitted a letter from their lawyer saying that a gate is allowed and cited case. In Connecticut, he didn't cite exact cases, but he said it's been upheld in the courts. So the commission had no choice but to accept the application. And then let the process work, and and the process is working. We will find out one way or another legally from our town attorney, whether the commission get after on this application.
Okay, but, okay, I just think that there's an answer already and.
Um, may I answer, may I answer? One, just one quick answer to Barbara?
Yeah, go ahead, Aaron, yep.
Okay, um. The right-of-way was written sixty to a hundred years ago. Is a kind of a boilerplate that you find on every. Of course, it's a legal question, but it's written on many, many, and I asked my lawyer, and I said, look, um, you know, I bought this house, and it says. The man can write, uh go pass and repass whenever he wants. He said, yes, but there's a limit, even to that, if this goes to court, okay? Um, there is, uh, and there is precedence as far as installing gates on private right-of-way. This is a private, not a public right-of-way. There's distinction between between the two, a very important distinction. And so if you read the Bible. Um, literally, it means that you can stone people, you know, because you. Take whatever was written thousand, two thousand years ago and 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 follow the rules. You get Sharia laws for that. That means that if you steal, your hand gets cut off. But if you read the boilerplate um right-of-way text, which is very, very short. It is so wide and broad.
All right, Aaron, again, this is, we we we're wasting the Wetland Commission's time. Talking about legal issues and what your opinion is on what's going on. Well, I did answer Barbara. I answered her straight up as to what the fact is. So let's, let's move on. Is there anybody else who wants to state anything? Greg, could you keep it short, because I'm cutting this thing off in two minutes?
I will be real short. Um. Mr. Palatnik said that uh he had a surveyor that 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 placed stakes or what have you, and the surveyor said. There is no survey in the record that shows those stakes. There is no surveyor's opinion of those stakes. For all I know, anybody could have stuck those stakes there, because there's no survey showing it, and so. And and I don't see an enormous amount of credibility here um in terms of in terms of saying things that are that are actually true. So I I gotta tell you, I see no opinion of a surveyor. I don't think we have anything on that. And counsel did not cite any cases, so it, you know, it the and the problem with counsel's letter, this is not just, he cited one case, I cited another. He didn't even do the analysis that you have to do under our Supreme Court's rulings in order to reach the conclusion. All he did was give you a a, you know, a a an example of of one theory without actually. Applying it to the facts. In any event, that's all I have to say.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Commission, do I have a motion to close the public hearing, or should we continue it? Is anybody awake?
Well, Russ, if we need to get a legal opinion from our town attorney. Does that mean we continue the public hearing, or we close the public hearing?
No, 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 we could close the public hearing, go to a regular meeting and talk about that.
Okay.
Um, Russ, can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Uh, I I would, uh, the idea that counsel would put in an opinion and it wouldn't be an opportunity for 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 other parties to rebut it. Is something that I'm a little bit uncomfortable with, because the opinion could. Could be definitive, but it might not be correct either. Not that I don't think counsel, your counsel is not an excellent.
In that case, Greg, you could all go to court and not waste our time with legal matters. The commission is gonna listen to our consultant more than any other, and that's what the commission's always done. And we're not gonna be interested in rebutting our uh our town. Legal counsel, that that's really for a court and the lawyers could go in front of a judge and do it, and that at that point. Legal counsel. That that's really for a court and lawyers could go in front of a judge and do it in that, at that point.
I had to ask Russ.
Yeah, I, I know, but you gotta understand.
One more thing, one more thing. Aside from the legality and from giving us a permit to put up a gate. Can you uh give us uh your opinion, the committee can give us your opinion on on the amount of disturbance that thi- this may cause. To the wetlands because.
Aaron, we don't, we don't give opinions. We listen to the facts and then we vote. It's that simple. We don't give opinions. We give an opinion when we vote. We give an opinion when we vote, and that opinion is easy. Is what you propose to do protective of the wetlands? Is there a feasible and prudent alternative that's better for the wetlands? As I've explained to a lot of the new members, our our position here is not to deny. It's to work with owners to get where they wanna be unless the wetlands could be harmed. If the wetlands, and we do, we really do in this commission and not a lot, and commissions of the state do what we do. We respect property owner rights. But when it comes between a property owner's right and protecting a wetland, the wetlands will always win with this commission. So we give an opinion when we vote. We're almost like a jury in a court. We listen to the facts. We listen to the experts. We get our own experts or lawyers' opinions where it's appropriate, and then we make a decision as a team. So that's how it works. But we have to get on with our regular meeting. It's gonna be a long night for us. So I'm looking for a motion to close the public hearing unless somebody feels different on the commission.
So moved, Russ.
Do I have a second on that? Let's see, I gave the second. Julie, just for your, right, Sierra?
Sure.
Okay, uh, any discussion? Okay, all of, all in favor of closing the public hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none. The motion carries to close the public hearing. Uh, so that's it. We'll move on to our regular agenda if you could bring that up. And John Cody, you're you're here, right, John? With a working wifi?
Yes, Russ, it's John Cody, I'm here.
Thank you. Alright, welcome everybody to the regular meeting of the Roxbury Inland Wetlands and Water Courses Commission. It is Tuesday, August twenty-third, twenty-twenty-two. Where did the summer go, I ask? Um, so I'll call the meeting to order. Um, Sierra, we'll start with you.
Uh, Sierra Gorgleon here.
Yep. John Smalligan.
Rob Horgan.
Two Fitch.
Melanie, you out there?
Yep, Melanie Joln.
And that's it. We do have a folkworm with all five voting members. Uh, I want to thank Sierra for stepping up to a voting member. She's a very busy mo- mother of three very active children and two crazy dogs. So I have a lot of respect for Sierra and I I like all the people on the commission. Uh, I value you that you give your time to the town even though your time is limited. Uh, I also wanna welcome Melanie. What's your last name, Melanie?
Joln.
I I wanna welcome Melanie as a new member to the commission. She's gonna be an alternate member. Uh, Melanie's young and we love it that we have young people coming on to the commission. Um, Melanie, just so you know, when you're an alternate, you could ask questions and partake in everything during the meetings. But once you, but you can't make a motion unless you're a voting member, and you might be some nights. If somebody doesn't show up. Then I will seat you for them and I'll let you know that. But you can't make a motion and once a motion is made. Alternates can't ask questions or or be involved. Uh, I don't know why our legislators did that, but this is how lawyers work, so just letting you know that um that. And there is some, there is a new course on the deep website for uh people on commissions. So you could become certified. You're not required to come certified, but we all are. Um, I I think it's a great course. It's new, much better than the first one. I I encourage you to take that course, okay?
Okay, thank you, Russ.
But but thank you so much for taking your time to get on the commission as well as all the people. Uh, that've been on the commission for decades. So we'll move on to um. What what's next?
Communications from the public.
Any communications from the public?
Yes, you have a letter from the first selectman.
Okay.
Which I just put up.
Okay, Patrick is doing what he should do and he's just notifying the commission that the town will be replacing Weller's Bridge in the future. Um, it's expected begins soon with construction likely in twenty-twenty-five. They're gonna start the design phase, just so we all know what's going on. Thank you, Patrick. Next?
Minutes from July twenty-sixth.
Hey, hey, Julie, is there any way to enlarge the this? I I think it's reading like fifty-six point three percent. Great, thank you.
That matter?
I look for a motion to approve the minutes from the July twenty-six, twenty-twenty-two meeting. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Uh, Russ, I was out, so I'll abstain.
Okay. Uh, okay, the motion to approve, uh, say aye.
Aye.
John, you're abstaining? Anybody opposed? Motion carries. The minutes are approved.
Okay, old business. Uh, one oh two North Street.
Yeah, this is Doug Divesta, who's the engineer for a subdivision at one oh two North Street, Roxbury. The subdivision is just to split the lot in two. Uh, we've gone through this two meetings. I wanted to go out and see it, but I needed it cut first so I could access it. Kathy came with me. This is one of those cases where it looks a lot worse on paper than it does in reality. Um, Kathy and I walked the whole thing and I really don't see any issue with this uh. With this proposal for the subdivision. Again, the house is not approved, but they're just showing that. Uh, a septic in a house can be put in. If you remember, the Newtown Health District denied the septic because it was not more than a hundred feet. From a wetland or water course. Um, it was then learned that Roxbury never joined on the Newtown's uh requirements. Uh, the state requirements are fifty feet distance and eighteen inches above modeling. Uh, that means you have to be above the water table by eighteen inches. Newtown's is a hundred feet distance and two feet of modeling. So I wondered why Newtown changed it and went went uh more strict, which you can do. You can't, you can't go less strict than state regs, but you can go more strict, which Newtown chose to do. So I tal- called Donna Culver, our uh who runs the health department, which were part of the Newtown district. Donna is just awesome. We're lucky to have her. And Donna explained to me why Newtown went stricter because there's so much more development. They've run into some problems uh with septics in Newtown because the development is more intense. She doesn't see that ever happening at Bridgewater or Roxbury. And when they found out that Roxbury was still on the old rule, they did approve the septic. Because uh we're still in the fifty foot. I walked the whole thing and I really see no problem with this with this subdivision proposal. And and I know that Kathy, I can't speak for her, but but she agreed. Anybody on the commission have any comments or have any questions?
Uh, Russ, I took a look at it actually uh earlier today and I don't have a problem with it either.
Okay. Rob, did you have any issues?
No.
Okay, they did, they did cut up the near the wetlands, so I was able to look and get a good, good feel for it. Oh, I I, okay, I'll look for a motion to approve of to uh, I'll look for a motion for the subdivision.
I'll make a motion to approve this as a regulated activity.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
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 What's next?
Thank you, Russ.
Yeah, no problem, Doug. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is fifty-five Garnet Road, notice of violation.
Uh, could we take a recess so I could have a bourbon first? Never, no, I'm only kidding. Okay, so a cease and desist order is in uh, is active. At the last meeting, we asked Ms. Grebba to provide a soil scientist report. And uh and to tell us who the contractor is, who who clear-cut without a permit. And she submitted a freedom of letter dated August ninth, twenty-twenty-two. And it's to me, to Mr. Cody and myself. Please note that I've submitted an informational request under the Connecticut Freedom of Information Act to the Roxbury Town Clerk. To obtain any documents identifying any wetlands where intermittent water courses located within a hundred feet of my property. Located at fifty-five Garnet Road. I will not attend the August twenty-third, twenty-twenty-two inland wetlands commission meeting. Until after receipt of the written documentation of the location of the intermittent water course. And designated wetlands are regulated area. I will wait to respond to the notice of violation after receipt of this information. I would also like to confirm the town's receipt of the July twenty-first, twenty-two, twenty-twenty-two package submitted. At the request of in advance of the July twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-two inland wetland commission meeting. Including application for removal of dead trees in a non-regulated mer- area. Thank you for attention. Unfortunately, Mrs. Grebba, a cease and desist area doesn't give you the right to delay the commission. By submitting a it uh Freedom of Information Act. It is the opportunity for you to present the commission with evidence of the commission's feeling. That this was a regulated activity. You were told at the last meeting that it is your requirement to have a soil scientist. Come to your property and delineate inland wetlands and water courses. Unfortunately, you tend to like to fight rather than make it easy on you. And the committed reg- uh the committed members of this commission. If you came to the notice of violation, we probably would have made you pay an after-the-fact fee of three hundred and fifty dollars. And ended this, but yet you continue to dig a hole. You don't understand what's legal and this is a very serious matter. By not attending this meeting, it's almost like not attending a court requirement. A cease and desist order is the first step to legal uh a legal pathway. When we've given you more than enough opportunity to do the friendly pathway, which everybody in this town follows. You have the distinction of being the first people, person in the town of Roxbury. Who will now have to go to court because we're gonna levy a fine and we are gonna ask the court to approve it. As far as your uh request, you're asking for documents that affi- identify any designated wetlands. Or in intermittent water courses located with within a hundred feet of fifty Garnet, no, Roxbury, Connecticut. At the last meeting, you were told to get a soil scientist to delineate that. You failed. To uh to meet the commission's request. Photos illustrating alleged tree cutting violations that Mr. Cody stated he relied on at the July twenty-six, twenty-two inland wetlands. And water courses meeting, including the date and time that each photo was taken. The person who took the photo and the geographic location that each photo represents. John, did you respond to that?
Uh, Russ, as far as the FOI request, I acknowledge that I received it last week. And I'm going to start putting that through because the photographs, locations, all that's kind of complicated. It's gonna be time consuming.
Julie, do we have the photograph that John sent me last week? The sound?
Russ, it's John. Yeah, if you look at, if you scroll down, Julie, there's two photographs. They have the posted signs. Okay, there is one. Um, Julie, can you show the other photograph, please? Okay, there's the other one.
Those look like dead trees to anybody? Look pretty white to me.
Yeah, they're soon gonna be dead.
Yeah, well, they're dead. They're cut down.
Yeah.
Um, and then after that, another photo shows where she cut down the tree with the posted signs on them. So Mrs. Grebba, you wanna play games? You picked the wrong commission to play games with. We will get you those photos. John, will you assure that she gets those photos this week?
Yeah, definitely, Russ. That's my uh my agenda due this week.
She's requesting the April fourth, twenty-twenty-two letter from Mr. Cody where he references the seven fifteen twenty-two ce- cease and. Desist order to cease and to submit, to assist and submit a restoration plan. Sublift violation in inland wetlands and water courses commissioned on property at fifty-five, six Garnet Road in Roxbury. She has that letter. It was sent to her certified man. You know, for somebody who claims you don't understand because you don't speak English very well, you wrote a really great letter. You really did. It's very, I mean, you signed it, so I assume you wrote it. So I feel like I'm being Van Winkle'd here. Um, and I and I'm not, I'm not really have the patience for games. And you're gonna find that one out. Written communications to and from John Cody, including emails regarding the properties known as fifty-five Garnet Road. And fifty-six Garnet Hill Road, Roxbury, between the period of one one twenty-two to eight one twenty-two. John, would you, would you make sure she gets all emails from you?
Yeah, Russ, I started looking at, there's, there's a bunch. I had to put those. I basically do have a folder with all the correspondence and photographs already. Um, it's just compiling it now. I'm I'm on it.
Written communications to or from the members of the Roxbury Inland Wetlands Commission, including emails regarding properties known as fifty-five Garnet Road. And fifty-six Garnet Hill Road, Roxbury, between January and August of twenty-two. There are no written communications. The commission is not allowed to have any communications between each member except at meetings. And I can assure you, there were no communications between the commission members on this issue. John, would you make sure that's put in your response to her?
Yes, sir.
This information is being requested to allow an informed response to the NOV. Unfortunately, the NOV is gone. We're now into a cease and desist order hearing, which you decided not to attend tonight. Please note that I am requesting time to respond to the NOV until after receipt of the above information. Uh, again, you had the time to respond to the NOV. You didn't come to the meeting. We then issued a cease and desist order and we had a show cause hearing in accordance with the regulations of the state of Connecticut. You appeared at that meeting. You were told at that meeting you need to hire a soil scientist and. and you need to tell us who the contractor is. You failed to do both. The fine is two thousand dollars a day for each violation. I think there's one violation, the clear cutting of trees. I'd say it took four days to do the work. We could do better when our lawyers will be requesting information on who the contractor is and how many days it took the contractor. We are not gonna set a fine based on the damage to the wetlands. It, it's clearly there was damage. Uh, and we're, we're not even setting a fine whether it was wetlands because we given you the opportunity to hire a soil scientist. I know it's an intermittent stream, but I needed you to hire somebody to tell you that. There's clearly a violation, but the reason why I would like to set a fine to the commission members is because she's totally thrummed, thumbed their nose at the commission, at its members, at the reg, at the regulations that are, are by the state of Connecticut, Connecticut and adopted by the town of Roxbury. She obviously had no respect for authority. She was given every right to come into this commission and provide information so we could, and the commission was more than willing to end this. But she wants to continue with it, so let's continue it. As long as our lawyers approve, because this will be going to lawyers and we will be going to court, unfortunately, it will cost the taxpayers of the town of Roxbury money. And I want to apologize to the taxpayers ahead of time. But this is why we have to do this. Because we can't allow people to stick their noses at our regulations. Wetlands and water courses protection in the town of Roxbury is very important to the town of Roxbury. It's very important to ninety nine point five percent, maybe ninety nine point nine percent of the people of the town of Roxbury. The people in this town demand that we protect wetlands and water courses and that everybody be treated fairly. So if one person who clear cuts trees has to get a permit and follow the process, then another person shouldn't be able to do what they want and then claim that they don't, there are no wetlands or water courses and she wants to see proof of where that is. When she was clearly explained that at the cease and desist order meeting. I would like to hear from other commission members on what they think and what they think a fine should be. We could find up to two thousand dollars a day per violation. Uh, we could also find the contractor who we don't know the same and it's separate.
Russ, I, I have a question. The per day, is that from the cease and desist until we come to an agreement? Or is that per day of work that's being done? Or what, what, what is the?
It's from the day of the seat, when we close the cease and desist hearing and decide that she didn't cooperate.
And what was?
It could be a very hefty fine, but we don't wanna make it where, where the court's gonna tell us that it's not reasonable.
But what is the, how, how many days is that? I mean, I, I just would like to know what the maximum would, could be.
I think it's twenty five thousand dollars, but I may be wrong.
That, that's.
So it's. And, and the court, the courts really look at the damage too. I mean, the courts won't be happy that she was given every opportunity to fix this and there's a commission that was perfectly willing at the NOV meeting to require an after the fact application fee and, and have a promise that she doesn't do any more cutting. But she toe chose not to attend that. And she forced us into a cease and desist hearing, which she was told to submit information and has now totally ignored us and is requesting for information that she already has. So it's a delay tactic.
Well, well.
I, I personally, I propose a fine of ten thousand dollars.
But I, but I think it should be ten for the owner and ten for the contractor.
I agree. Well, I don't know. On the contractor, I would wanna know who he is and have him come to a cease and desist meeting and have him be able to have the opportunity to answer and, and not fine him as much as if he's cooperative. And he, and explains why he cut, did this and why he thought it didn't require a permit.
But what if it's not? Oh, go ahead. Sorry.
Well, so can we impose a fine on someone? We don't know who it is.
No, but, but no, because we have to issue him a notice of violation.
Okay.
And give him the opportunity to speak, but she won't tell us who the contractor is. But when we go to court, we're gonna, we're gonna request, you know, we're gonna do a discovery and she's gonna have to give that information.
Okay, can this, what we're proposing tonight, can that be changed in the future by us?
A- a- absolutely. And, and our lawyers may tell us, no, you can't do it, or yeah, you can. So maybe the thing to do is to close the cease and desist hearings and, and no, actually, we keep it open because it makes it where she can't do another thing. And, uh, we contact our attorneys and get our attorney's advice on what kind of fine we, we should, we should, uh, do here. And then we can have a meeting next month and keep fifty five Garnet Road on the agenda so we could discuss the amount of the fine. I think that's a good idea, Rob. Don't you?
Yes, I do.
All right.
Yeah, I, I, I agree with that, Russ, and I'd really like to know who the contractor is and, um, if it is a contractor, for all we know, it could have been some just friend of hers with the chainsaw that came in and did this.
That's what I was gonna ask, if it was like a relative or something.
I, I saw a truck with, with a name on it, but I don't remember.
Oh.
So I think it was a contractor, tree guy. But we will find out, unfortunately, and I didn't wanna go this route, but she just forced us to stand up uh, for what we spend so much time protecting. And I, and I know that if we ignored this, it would, it would take away our credibility. And I'm ready to tell a judge that if he's, if he may not find her. And, and I don't know why I'm wasting my time if, if we're, if the courts aren't gonna back us up. And I'm not saying they won't, but the courts really are, have backed up wetland commissions as long as they're reasonable and there's a clear, there was a clear opportunity for an applicant to fix, to fix what they did wrong.
Russ, I have a question for you.
Okay, Sue.
Um, I think we were talking in the last meeting, how, does this involve a lien then on her house? Why this isn't cease and desist or anything like that or going to court or?
It, it could, it could. I, I think a lien comes in if they don't pay the fine, then, then the town could lien the house. But our lawyers will, will guide us on, on all that.
Okay, all right, cuz, yeah, I think we need to pursue this because I think that we have given every opportunity for her to try to make this right.
Yeah, I don't, I don't understand, uh, what she's thinking. But clearly she writes very well. Um, and clearly she has an understanding of what's going on, but she doesn't understand the regulations. And I would hope that a lawyer didn't help her write this cuz the lawyer did her no, no favors. Cuz everybody knows that a cease and desist order and a cease and desist, desist hearing is very um, critical and it's the next step from going to court or not. So I'm gonna have our lawyers draft her a letter, putting her on notice and making her aware that she cannot do, cut another tree until this is resolved. And then, then we'll meet next meeting. We'll probably have a, a, a meeting, closed doors with just the commission and the lawyers to discuss all the legalities.
Hey, Russ, another question again. Sorry. She put those signs up, but has there, there has not been any, I hope there has not been any further tree cutting since our last meeting? Do we know that?
No, not that I see, but I know that one of those trees, the bigger tree was cut down after that picture was taken, right, John? Don't you have a picture where they're missing that the next picture?
The pic, the picture prior shows that.
Show the picture there that there you see, one of them's gone.
So this occurred after our last meeting?
Uh, so it's John Cody knows, Sue. The first picture is what I went through for the initial complaint and I sent the letter. Um, stayed at the NOV and then she did the cutting after. This is the second cutting.
Could you flip back again, Julie? Okay, yep, got it. Thanks.
Okay. What's next, Julie?
Fifty one Judge Bridge Road, deliberation after public hearing.
Okay. Commission. What do you think? I think we should get an opinion from our attorneys on whether we could vote on this application or not.
I, I agree, Russ. I, I think a lot of what was presented tonight is outside our privy here and, and belongs more in a civil court. But, um, yeah, let's get an opinion from our attorneys.
Yeah, I would have concerns about approving it, even if we, we decided it wasn't gonna have an impact. Because I don't know if we have the right to approve it and I'd have concerns about denying it. Because if we deny it, we put him in a position where maybe he had the right to, to submit the permit and we denied him that right. So I, I think this is all a legal, legal deal. And so I will get in touch with our town attorney about this issue as well to give us an opinion before the next meeting.
I agree.
You could give an opinion on the wetland bit of it and say on condition that legally this is approved, we are okay with it.
Aaron, we're, we're in, we're in, uh, talking to each other as members and you really can't step in. The, the public hearing, it's not a public hearing. Um, and you can't tell the commission what we should be doing. The commission has decided that we're gonna go to our attorney, our town attorney and get guidance from them on whether we can vote on this application based on its wetland merits or whether we can't even, uh, go move forward with it, at which case we would have to deny it based on, uh, we don't have the right to, to accept this permit based on legal merit. And then it, then it's up to you and Mr. Dumas to figure it out.
Yeah.
Okay, what's next, Julie?
Okay, um, Notice of Violation, two hundred South Berry Road.
I thought we took care of that.
Um, I believe you.
Uh, Russ, this is John Cody. Yeah, um, her previous did come into the office and do the after the fact application and paid the fee.
Oh, I know I'd sign so we could vote to, um, uh, I'll make a motion to vote that this notice of violation has been, um, taken care of, has been accepted. And therefore it could be taken off the, the books. That's my motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
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 Uh, now we're in new business?
Now we're in new business. Um, we are looking at eighty four Good Hill Road, replacing existing fall, failing bridge.
Paul Shemansky's here for that.
Yeah, good evening, uh, for the record.
Paul.
Paul Shemansky, representing the applicant. I'll keep it very brief. I know you've had an extended meeting. Um, this project is at eighty four Good Hill Road. You guys were kind enough several months ago to approve a pond dredging. This is directly adjacent to it uh, on what is an existing bridge that is in great disrepair. It's about four to five decades old. We're basically proposing to replace it in kind. There's an existing pier in the water course which we're proposing to replace. So if you'd like, uh, I'll be happy to meet anyone on site for a site walk and then we can discuss it in more detail next month.
Okay, I'll go because I've had lots of experience at this property.
Okay.
I think that too.
Okay, so Paul, I'll be in touch and we could set up a meeting on the site. Um, if anybody else wants to go, are they okay to just go and look at it?
Yeah, no problem. Just, just have him give, uh, John a heads up the day before, then he can just send me a message to make sure the gate's open for him.
Okay.
No problem.
John who? Oh, John Cody. Yeah, okay. All right. I thought, okay, yep. Thank you, Paul.
Thanks.
Julie, what's next?
Sorry, okay, um, now we're going to the other side of the property. Sixteen Painter Hill Road, dead tree removal and new plantings. And it's Paul Shemansky once again.
Good evening again. I know you missed me. I'll keep this even more brief. Uh, we, Bill Davies from Westchester Tree is on this job with me. Um, he's inventoried about eight hundred trees, uh, along Painter Hill Road. Um, he has identified about twenty trees, uh, that are dead and then another number of trees that he'd like to just flush cut um, to allow for the long-term health of the forest. In return, we are, uh, proposing, uh, plantings of about forty four three inch caliper trees, uh, over three hundred, uh, shrubs and over five hundred fifty, uh, ferns. So whoever wants to walk the other side, maybe we could just then go down Good Hill, Painter Hill over to here and look at this as well.
Okay, I'll do the, the same day that I look at the bridge.
Okay, sounds great. Then I'll just reach out to you, Russ, and we'll coordinate.
Okay.
Thanks for your time, guys. Told you I'd keep a brief.
All right. Thank you, Paul. We appreciate.
Have a great evening.
Yep. Next.
Okay, let's see. It is going to be one Davenport Road.
Ah, Brian, that's another favorite of mine.
Hey, Russ, how are you?
Brian, very well, very well. What do we wanna do at one Davenport?
Hey, there's an existing very small pond there that's on the brook.
Yep.
And they'd like to do some repair work, mostly just repointing of a lot of the, um, stone and mortar construction that's there. Gems in pretty good shape, walls are in pretty good shape, but they do need, they have a bunch of cracked mortar between stones. They like to fix and also dredge the pond out, which they haven't done in probably fifty years. Um, pond is approximately thirty feet by fifty feet. It's very, very small. Um, it's a good time right now to do it with the weather being
Yeah.
nice and dry.
Yeah, I'd hate.
So.
I don't really wanna delay it.
Maintenance type of an activity on this.
Um. Yeah, yeah, I, does anybody have an issue with that? Anybody have any questions? I mean, I, I, I would like to look at it. I mean, I don't mind calling it maintenance, but give me a week to look at it.
Sure.
So that our homework is correct?
Yeah, the owners are not normally there during the week. So I mean, if you stop over there, it's very easy to see. It's a very small lot. As soon as you drive in the driveway, the brook's right inside.
Right. I know it well.
Yeah, it's very easy to see.
Yeah, Tom, I'll make a motion to prove this is a maintenance activity based on the chairman's approval. Um, within a fourteen day period, cuz we gotta give, we gotta give people the opportunity of a public notice period. Do I have a second on that?
Uh, I, I'll second that, but do we have to give, because this is, could be considered a maintenance activity? Do we have to give the fourteen days notice?
Yeah, no, we don't. We don't. Brian, I think it's in the interest of wetlands to get this approved quickly.
Yeah, it's a good time right now.
I, I'll do it this weekend. I'll get it done this weekend. And then I'll just email you, but for now, you could go ahead, contingent upon the chairman's email, uh, agreeing that it is a maintenance activity. So do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thanks again.
Yeah, thank you, Brian.
Have a good night. See ya.
You too. Julie, what else we got here? My meatballs are getting cold. Oh, Miss. Oh, Mr. Cody, we must be coming to the end. John, you wanna report?
Uh, yes, Russ. Uh, I did send in the administrative permits, non-regulated, that were approved. Oh, there we go. It's been fairly busy, not as much as the last couple of months, but still on the uptick. Uh, the only thing that's not on there that is worth mentioning is the new house on sixty-seven, um, Mallory Road. It's a long driveway. There was a trench that was dug for utilities. We did have a rainstorm. It unfortunately took out the silt fence. I mean, the rain was a while ago. I went there, talked to contractors, so we put the silt fence back up, staked hay bales across there, put some, um, hay bales in the trench itself to slow down and divert some water that was going down the sluice way. But it, it was rectified rather, rather well.
Okay, great. Anything else?
Russ, I have a quick pain in the neck thing to ask.
I love you, Sue. Go ahead.
You know, the only thing I'm worried about is some of, you know how we always say we wanna get some of this activity done when it's dry season, you know, as far as when the streams aren't running? But, but I'm no expert at all, so that's why I put, put this question out there. What I worry about is because I know like a lot of, you know, the streams where they've told people no fishing, no going in the streams because you're disturbing what little habitat that the fish or amphibians have to go into. Okay, and we're the, in this extreme drought, and I just worry, are we doing the wrong thing? Like, I worry about like the construction possibly starting on, um, I don't know when it's supposed to, uh, supposed to start soon on Squire, um, Road, um, but like, I don't know, but is it the wrong thing? You didn't, I just wanted to ask that, okay, that's all.
No, I, and it's a great thing to bring up. The reason why there's no fishing is because trout pool in very small areas. So it's almost like putting a bunch of deer in a fenced-in area and shooting at them. They don't have a chance. And because they're under stress, um, that fishing causes more stress. If they get caught and they get thrown back in, they're gonna die because they're under so much stress. So that's what that bulletin was about. I know the Pamparog River Association put out a bulletin that you shouldn't, you should cut down on your water use with your well because it affects the river, Pamparog River, which isn't totally true. It's only if your well is close to the river. Obviously, if your well is up on top of a hill, that'll have no effect on the river because it's too far away. Um, but we should be conserving water, even if our wells are dug deep like mine is. Um, we should be conserving water. But as far as disruption of stream beds that are dry, that, that's more of a, uh, because the fish are pooled um, kinda thing. Now, as far as the ponds concerned, dredging the pond when it's dry, that, that is the time to do a pond. And all that wildlife in the pond would be affected no matter what, whether there's a lot of water, whether there's a little water cuz you're digging out the pond. The thing is, it does, that wildlife does recover. So that, that's a good concern, um, but it has more to do with stress. And, yeah, I know they've, they've cut out fishing on a number of rivers in the state.
All right, thanks. I just was worried. I didn't know, like, as far as, you know, salamanders, different things like that, whether you would be, you know, disrupting because there's, like, all the earth is so dry and that there's nowhere for them to go. And that's what I was thinking of.
Yeah, well, and a pond say, uh, issue, it's really the vernal pools that. But in a pond, the salamanders pretty much get eaten up by the fish. That's why vernal pools are so important. So they're in the woods somewhere.
Okay.
Dug into the dirt really deep because that's what they do, I am told. All right. I'll look for a motion to adjourn unless then somebody has anything else.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Night, everybody. Thank you.
Thank you guys so much for your time tonight. We really appreciate it.
Good to see you, Christina. Take care.
Good to see you, too.
Good night.